So that will get started. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the August 10th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. First on our agenda is to approve minutes from the July 13th meeting. Do I have a motion? Carl, second. Jen, all in favor? Okay, Brendan? I'm assuming. All in favor, unanimous? Thank you.
I wasn't there.
Next is to review and approve. Yeah, oh, and okay, yes, one abstention, Bob. Thank you. Next is to review and approve this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion? Sherry, second. Julie, all in favor? Unanimous? So next, our comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? And if you would like to address the board, we ask that you just use the raise hand feature to identify yourself, please. And Dr. Letz, we'll call your name.
Yes, so it looks like our first is Bryant Suho. Okay, Bryant, let me. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure, can.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name's Bryant Suho, as you know. I'm an alumni of NCHS class of 2011. And over the past two months, I've been involved in extensive conversations centered around diversity and inclusion within NCPS. And these conversations were with teachers, current students, administrators, and parents within the New Canaan community. So after the ABC Scholars hosted the event, a chance to unpack, a number of individuals, including myself, hosted an event on July 29th, where current and former New Canaan residents were able to come together in an open forum. We had over 50 attendees, including students, alumni, and parents who shared their opinions, desires, and experiences regarding diversity and inclusion in New Canaan public schools. The event was not only a source of diverse perspectives and ideas, but also provided a much-needed space for these kinds of conversations to happen. There were three main themes that came up during the forum. Number one was that more BIPOC in the NCPS faculty would be beneficial both to increase diversity as well as to provide BIPOC role models for BIPOC students. Number two was that there is a lack of representation throughout all disciplines taught in school. History classes were commonly criticized for providing limited coverage of cultures and perspectives that aren't white or European-centric. Current students also mentioned that information about other cultures such as African or Latino is provided often more through social media than through our education system. Number three was there were many students, both current and past, that experienced blatant instances of racially motivated bullying that went unaddressed by fellow students and by members of staff. Several attendees expressed the need for some sort of training or education that just gives students and staff a better understanding of the impact that these incidents can have on its victims. And a common theme expressed by these attendees was that this sort of education should happen at younger ages. We have faith that the Board of Education will do its utmost to address these concerns and desires of New Canaan residents. And individuals such as myself are looking forward to working with you and providing support in whatever ways we can. We think that by facing this dilemma head-on, we can create a supportive and healthy environment for all New Canaan students and help them to understand systemic racism, justice, and privilege as they enter college and workforce. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
I see Valentina. So I'm going to. There we go.
Hi.
Okay, Valentina? Yep.
Great. Hi, I'm Valentina Zamora, as you all know, NCHS class of 2021. First of all, I want to commend NCPS and the Board of Education on the amount of thoughtful research, conversation, and resources put towards the COVID-19 operational plans. It's incredible to see what can be done when the community identifies a collective issue and puts energy towards finding the best solution. While reviewing the incredibly detailed COVID operational plan, I was impressed by key phrases, including addressing issues of inclusion, equity, and access for all learners in a hybrid or remote learning environment. Partial reopen plans must prioritize vulnerable populations and identify gaps and develop action plans for reopening that specifically address inclusion, equity, and access for all learners with strategies and clearly defined action steps. I hope that tonight, as you discussed reopening, we keep these ideas at the forefront. As per the CDC, those who face racial and housing discrimination are disproportionately affected by the virus. Additionally, with the extension of professional development for teachers, we hope there will be conversations and seminars around bias and inclusion efforts. Lastly, it is incredible to note in the operation guide that you are, quote, "collaborating with internal and external partners to make well-deformed decisions," as well as, quote, "designating an employee to serve as a COVID-19 health and safety compliance liaison who is responsible for engaging with students, parents, faculty, staff, and administrators to answer questions or concerns about health and safety requirements." The hard work done for the COVID operations guide is a model for how we need to address other crises in our school, most prominently the need for greater inclusion. Clear communication, active data seeking via surveys of the community, and consultation with external experts and dedicated staff to champion the issue is vital. The goal of diversity and inclusion to be voted on next week is a promising first step, but will not be meaningful until we attribute resources and dedicated staff to this. Just as for COVID, we engage with health experts in the state and town.
Two minutes, Valentina.
We need a BIPOC dedicated staff member to champion this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Okay, I don't see anyone.
Yep, moving on. Okay, reports in recognition. Tonight's focus of our meeting will be on discussing the school plans for next year, school year 2020, 21. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Letzzy and our cabinet members, as well as members of our reopen committee for initial comment and presentation.
Well, thank you. And again, I hope that this is an interactive back-and-forth with everyone. We have the good fortune of having a well-represented reopening committee, right, with multiple board members participating in that throughout. And even though we're not a committee, so dropped in and out of meetings wherever they could, and we're grateful for that. The, as you know, the guide was put together and sent up to the state about two weeks ago. The, and then, of course, things continue to evolve rapidly as, you know, we learn new things and the governor and the perspectives and expectations change a bit. So we've continued to evolve, as many of you know, evolve our approach and evolve the guide as we think about our start to the school year. And I said this earlier, and I just want to, I think it's worth repeating, the approach we've been taking from the start has not been solely to focus on the very first day of school, but to recognize and understand that what we're doing is laying out a roadmap for all, for our kids, for our schools, to do our very best to ensure they have the best year possible. There, we're thinking about all of our teachers, our staff, our parents, community, and how best can we, to use Harvard's phrase, create pandemic-resistant schools and provide meaningful and memorable, important educational experiences for our kids, with recognition that schools do much more than just transmit information, right? They provide opportunities for students to experience a whole host of things intellectually, socially, emotionally, and others. So the really, the great work of the team, the reopen committee, the conversations we've had, have led us to where we are tonight, which is to be comfortable and confident in showing with the full board and community our plans for the fall, for the first couple of weeks. And what you're going to hear about a bit is the onboarding and re-engagement with learning plan, which is in the guide itself. Before I get to that, and I'm grateful also to so many of the board members who joined us last week, or was it two weeks ago? I guess it was two weeks ago, last week, sort of last, two weeks ago, with all of the webinars that we had. We hosted a webinar for faculty at each building, and then we hosted a webinar for parents and guardians, community members at each school. And again, thank you to all the board members who came to one or multiple of those. But we had hundreds and hundreds of participants as we look back. And I'll share with you that the videos of those meetings have been viewed over 1,000 times. So I know, since I talk a lot of them, I disabled comments and ratings. So I learned that the hard way years ago. But the, but the fact that they've been viewed over 1,000 times, I think, really speaks to the appetite for information and the, you know, the need to know, to make good decisions. So one of the things we had spoken about last time we talked was a timeline that had us last week surveying parents to get their understanding of what their plans would be for the fall. We, given the storm and everything that happened, and knowing that this meeting was coming up tonight, we held off on that survey in order to be able to share the revised reopening plans with the board, the community. And then we'll be surveying this week and getting that information back, hopefully within a couple of days. And then we'll continue to bring that information forward to shape our sort of planning and decision-making. The guide itself, I'm going to actually share the screen, if that's all right, for a little bit. And while I've gotten very good at going through the entire slide, that's the entire guide, that's not what we're going to be doing tonight. What I do want to do, though, is just share a couple of important considerations in the guide itself. The, again, it's available on our website, and I really strongly, I strongly encourage people to go to visit the website, to take a look at the guide, flip through, develop an understanding of sort of all of the thoughts and effort and planning that's gone into our schools over the summer to prepare for the start of the new year. But just to focus in a couple of spots that I think are very important to highlight. As we think about schools in the fall and what they're going to look like and how we're going to create these pandemic-resistant schools, we're using the best practices that come from Harvard, from CDC, from State Department of Public Health, from others. And there are a few primary mitigation strategies that we're putting in place because we know, as we're required to by the state, to be, but the way that we're doing it is specific to New Canaan, given, you know, what we have and who we are in our buildings and our schedules and everything else. We know there's no one thing we can do to defeat the virus. It's the cumulative effort of our, cumulative impact of our collective efforts, sorry, that will determine how this goes. And what we mean by that, of course, is the implementation and the fidelity of these different strategies. So in cohorting, you know, we've looked at what, what's the best level of cohort you can create at the various groups in our schools? So we look at our elementary classrooms, and we consider the elementary classroom itself as a cohort. We look at our middle school, we look at the teams, whether it's the two teacher teams in the fifth grade or the four teacher teams in the, in the sixth through eighth grade, those become the cohorts. But the high school cohorting is very difficult. And, you know, hard, tough decisions continue to be made daily around different elements and aspects of the high school program. I'll share some with you a little bit later. Social distancing, you know, there's conversation about six feet versus three feet. Essentially, the guide and our approach is to maximize social distancing wherever we can. Even just prior to this meeting, I was on a call with a committee that I'm on, which has folks from the State Department of Public Health and others, talking about the importance of social distancing in the classroom and, you know, doing your best to get to that six feet. If three is the best you can do, then sort of maintaining the other strategies as well, because these strategies are meant to layer one on top of the other. Again, there's no one thing you can do, but if we take a series of steps in the right direction, it's best for, for our schools. Face coverings and masks, the state requires all students and staff, adults in the school building to wear a mask while they're in the building. And that's K-12. The knowing that, we look at what, where can we put in mask breaks and what can we do to bring students outside and do things like that, so they can have those breaks. And again, with the layering of these mitigation strategies, students at six feet apart in a classroom with good ventilation can take a mask break and put the mask back on and do those things. So we're working with the local health department and others to figure out exactly what that looks like, but keeping it in mind. Frequent hand washing is perhaps the most important thing you can do. So working to give, make sure we provide students with opportunities to do that. Now, the group I was just with is also looking at, are there external resources we can bring to bear for videos and instructional purposes for our students, staff, and community around all of these things? The daily health monitoring, staying home if feeling ill, again, equally important. We are not required by the state's guidance to do a daily temperature screening in their estimation and their, based on their research, they found that it's not particularly accurate. And recognizing that when you're bringing 500 or 1,000 or 1,500 students into a building, to do temperature screenings on the way in would create a queue, which would weaken the other mitigation strategies as well. So instead, it's really focused on teaching people to self-regulate, self-monitor, and to stay home if they're feeling ill. Now, the system that we've developed and put in place, and we're not going to go through all of it, is designed in part to facilitate students staying home if they're not feeling well, where if they're at 95%, where they typically would have come into school, we're putting a system in place where they can stay home for the day, still stay connected to their class if they feel well enough to do that, keep up with the work, and then jump right back in when they're feeling better. Because it really, one of the things we really focused on was creating a system that facilitated this for our kids, because we know so many times, they'll, even if they're not feeling great, they'll sort of tough it out for the day so they don't fall behind. So that's part of what our system's designed to do, because we are all in this together. So those occur across the board in our schools, regardless of the model. Again, I'm not going to go through all this. I know that you've read it. But I do want to talk about our first couple of days of school and, and into kind of, again, what we're calling the onboarding and re-engagement with learning plan. The, in the guide, if we look at page 14, we've made some changes to what we call our hybrid model. This is the orange scenario, so for a moderate community spread. But it's also a way that we can sort of onboard and re-engage our students at the beginning of the year as we teach them the mitigation strategies, teach them what they need to learn and be able to do in order to sort of create these, you know, pandemic-resistant schools. And it's also in recognition of the fact that our students haven't been in school since March, and our staff haven't been in school since March. So we, what we're thinking about, what makes, how can we build, put, build a hybrid model that works for all of our kids? And again, I'm, you're welcome, I'm not, I don't have a formal presentation. I'm going to talk through this, but if you want, have any questions or anything, just raise your hand or whatever else, and I'll stop, and we can engage in that. The original document had the cohorts attending on alternative days. So it goes going X, Y, X, Y, X, Y. There are several issues with that, not the least of which are that we are moving to a locked schedule in our high school that is on an A, B alternating schedule. And if we kept with an X, Y alternating days and an A, B alternating schedule, the students would have the same group of classes live and the same group of classes remote all the way through that experience. We didn't think that was the right way to do it. I also received several emails from parents in the community concerned about their ability to find childcare with alternating days, because the inconsistency of those days was causing an issue for them to try to line somebody up to do it every other day. So there were several emails from different levels asking if there was another way to look at it. So we did, and this is more consistent with what's going on in schools throughout our region and up into the Western Fairfield County group as well. We've done a little, a couple of things a little bit differently, but the model here is relatively similar, where one of the groups, 50% of the students, we call them cohort X, that's A through K, would attend every Monday and Tuesday, while the cohort Y, the L through Z, would be on remote learning on Monday and Tuesday. On Thursday and Friday, it's the opposite. Cohort Y would attend face-to-face in school, and cohort X would be on remote learning, home on remote learning. Now, several school districts in our region and throughout the state are doing Wednesday full remote days, where they, whether it's a half-day or full day, everybody's on remote. We don't, we don't have, we don't have a need to do that. We're able to clean our buildings regularly as we go through the week. On that Wednesday, we don't, we're not going to be serving lunch, so our students can start the day sort of really thoroughly and carefully cleaning the cafeteria, although they do every day, but really going through it extra carefully and while our students are in session. So we, we feel it's important to try to bring those kids in as much as we can. So we'll have either cohort X or cohort Y coming in for that half-day on Wednesday on alternating weeks. And Wednesday becomes a half-day because opposite the day is a professional learning opportunity for our teachers so that they can continue evolving and growing in their application and use of distant, remote learning, because it's about remote instruction, remote assessment, and everything that comes with it. It takes a lot of, a lot of training, a lot of work. We've done a lot in the summer already. We'll do more prior to the start of the school year, but that half-day will, will be important. So it's different than the model that was originally here. It's responsive to both our scheduling needs and to the community that really reached out, struggling with some of the childcare. And it does align with districts around us in this, in this way. So we think it's the right model. So I'm going to jump over to, so that's one change, is that the hybrid model. Another, an important part of this is also kindergarten. And we've really been thinking hard around what's the best for our youngest, youngest learners as they transition into the school year, in recognition of the fact that they haven't been in New Canaan public schools before. You know, when we closed in March and went to remote learning, those kindergartners had the benefit of all of those months in, you know, six months in, however many months. So they knew their teacher, they had those relationships, and they sort of built from there. But we, we don't have that with our kindergartners now. So what we're looking to do with our kindergartners is really go back old-school kindergarten with an AM session and a PM session. We'll still use the X and Y cohorts, but the X cohort will be in the morning session, and the Y cohort will be in the afternoon session with 90 minutes in between. And I'll show you that schedule on page 22. But the idea there is that, you know, two and a half hours or so of face-to-face time with the students and their teacher in the classroom for kindergartners is of more value than trying to do remote learning with kindergartners at home. So that's there. The hybrid model for kindergarten is the AM, PM session. Grades 1 through 12 is the XX, you know, YY.
Do they slip between AM and PM, or do they stay, you're either an AM or a PM?
You're either AM or PM, so that hopefully it helps with childcare.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Yep, yep. Okay. And let me jump to page 22, where this, we tried to, we all tried to sort of break this out very clearly. Again, this is all on the website. It's all in the document for folks to be able to read and absorb. Yes.
Hey, Brian, can I, I have a question about the people who have self-selected for remote learning. How do they self-select? And is there, how's the timing of it? Can they, is there a commitment to that? Or is it day-by-day? How do you plan for that?
Sure. So we ask folks to make a commitment, but also recognize that, you know, our doors are open, our schools are open, and we're public schools. And if people, you know, they want, they change their mind and they want to come in, we, it may take us a day or two to plan and to make that work, but they're welcome to come back. The, the survey that I'm going to send out in the next, you know, tomorrow, we'll send, get it out, we'll ask that question, you know, what are folks' plans? And for people who are planning to go, to begin in remote learning, we'll have a form for them to fill out to, you know, to make that official for us. But we do have to hold spots for them, because again, they can change their mind and come back once, and we hope they do, once they're comfortable in doing that. It's different than withdrawing from the school, and that's an important distinction to make. Folks, if people do withdraw, then, because they want to educate their child differently, then they're no longer enrolled in our system, right? So there's not, not a spot for them, there's not a locker when they come back or anything else. Their work would be done externally. If they stay in our system and opt for remote, then we, we would expect them to be in synchronous learning, so they'd be logging on during the school day, they'd be a part of the classroom, learning with those kids. There'll be times where they're on the screen, times where they're off the screen, you know, back and forth. But they would be following along with our curriculum and our program and our teachers so that if and when they do opt to come back in, they can do that with the least amount of friction.
Okay, so they'd be either an X or Y, and they would be participating in that classroom, but just remotely, you know, tapping into the live learning environment that's going on in that classroom. And then, should they choose to join that classroom physically, they just can seamlessly join?
Exactly. Yep. And again, it may take us a day or two to get everything organized, but that would be it. And bus transportation would be available to them if they needed it. And if we're in a hybrid at that time, they would join with their cohort, so they'd be in 50%, whatever. And if we're in full-in, they would come in every day. Okay? So the three models, then, we've got everyone in, the hybrid, as I just explained, and then the full remote. Now, the our metrics right now in Fairfield County remain good. They are, they put us in a yellow, which is the low community spread environment. So our plan here for onboarding and re-engagement, the ultimate destination is for us to get to the full-in, low-community-involvement scenario. But as we thought about things and really considered all of the variables, felt that just bringing everybody in all at once didn't make a lot of sense. There's an awful lot that has to occur, both to re-acclimate and to teach what folks need to learn in order to implement these mitigation strategies with fidelity. So our plan is in four phases. And the first phase begins right on August 31st and runs through September 17th. And these dates are targets. Any of this can be accelerated if the metrics really look great, or decelerated if we wanted to slow it down a little bit and make sure that we have everything we need and we're in the right place. So that's, but we felt it was important to put targets out there so people have kind of ballparks of what we're working towards. So I mentioned kindergarten, and here's just the times and how that would break out. So for the, these first couple of weeks, August 31st to September 17th, the kindergarten students will be, will attend every day in either the AM or the PM session based on cohort, which is alphabetical. And there are the times, you see, south begins at 8:15 and to 2:45. And so that's, it's the two and a half hours for the beginning for the morning cohort, two and a half hours for the afternoon, with 90 minutes in between, which gives us time to clean the room and gives our teacher time for lunch and whatever prep work needs to happen. So we'll be getting into those rooms and cleaning them in between. East and west, you know, same amount of times, just slightly different based on the, you know, their starting and end times. At the same time, grades 1 through 12 will be on the other schedule, as we talked about, except for the first four days, because we also need time to get technology and devices into kids' hands and give them a chance to work with it a little bit prior to going to full remote learning, not full, but going to the hybrid with remote learning. So the first four days, August 31st to September 3rd, students will attend by cohort on alternating days. So on August 31st, it's cohort X, September 1st, it's cohort Y, the second is X, and the third is Y. And this is so on the first day we see them, we can give them devices and teach them a little. And on the second day that they're out, we can do a little connection, try out some things, and teach them what they need to learn. And then what we're doing on Friday is closing schools for students and holding a day-long professional learning day for staff. And what that'll help us do is problem-solve anything that's come up, now that we've got kids coming back in the building with our, and using these mitigation strategies, and plan forward so that we're prepared for the beginning of our remote learning, which is Tuesday, September 8th, the Tuesday After Labor Day. We go into the hybrid schedule. And so Tuesday, cohort X would come in. And cohort Y would be home on remote learning, along with the students who self-selected into remote learning. On Wednesday, cohort X would come in again. The cohort Y is home, remote learning's home. Thursday, Y comes in, and X is remote. And then Friday, Y comes in, and X is remote. And I'll show you this graphically in a minute. I'm just talking through it, and then I'll show you a calendar that we put together. Again, on all of those days, starting on the 8th, anyone who's self-selected into remote is participating that way. We know that this is, this is a massive undertaking, right? You know, we're shifting a system to be able to implement and flex to meet the needs of three different groups simultaneously. But we're preparing for it. And, you know, well, there won't be, I'm sure there'll be some bumps, but we'll smooth them out and figure it out. And that's in part what the Wednesdays are for. So on Wednesday 9:09 is when we start the half-day. So we'll have a half-day of instruction for kids, K-12, and the staff will participate opposite that time in professional learning to continue to improve. Now, the Wednesday has become a little tricky with kindergarten, because you can't shorten a day and bring in both groups. So what we're doing, what we're doing for this period of time through the 17th is it'll be all is it'll be alternating Wednesdays that kindergarten students attend. But those, they'll stay in their AM or PM time slot because of, again, childcare. If you were, if parents work out childcare for the AM session because their child's in the PM session, we don't want to disrupt that as we're just, you know, every other Wednesday. So what, we're going to keep them in their session, but we might have to tweak it just a little bit to accommodate transportation since the rest of the district's getting out early. So we'll get that specifics nailed down once we finalize those reps.
Hey Brian, in the kindergarten information at the top, I'm assuming they're not coming September 4th either?
Right.
So you might want to just add that detail only because as a parent, as a former elementary parent, I would go just to the kindergarten information and I would ignore one through 12. And it doesn't, it doesn't reference that they don't have school on the 4th for the kindergarten.
Got it. And I, I would imagine Lisa's out there somewhere taking good notes for me, so I won't write it down, but I'll count on her. Good. That's good. Then that, that makes good sense. Because we also then have below it, the explanation of kindergartens on Wednesday. And maybe I pull that up or do something a little differently there too. And again, I'll show you the calendar that has everything that I think really sets it clearly. So, but this, this onboarding, we're calling this is the onboarding stage because it really is an opportunity for us to teach folks what they need to learn. By using the 50% model, it really does increase our social distancing, right? So we've got 50% of the students in the classroom, which helps us to get to the, you know, the, the social distancing. With all in, we've worked really hard to maximize the social distancing and I'm comfortable with what, with our plans. I think we all are. But this just builds that sort of comfort and adds that transitional period for everybody coming in. So then we go into the-
Brian. One question came in and I have a question on, before you move on to phase two. Just to clarify, on the kindergarten, so cohort X follows the rest of the district and that X is last names A through K. So the A through K will go in the morning and L through Z in the afternoon?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That was a question that came through. And then can you speak to the plans for the remote learners, those who opt into remote learning in terms of how they'll receive their technology, you know, the technology distribution and any training that might be available to them just to get them up to speed and ready for day one on the, I guess it's the 8th?
Yep. So part of the survey will be to ascertain technology needs for our remote learners because we recognize that if we have families with multiple children that may all be remote, their technology, they might not have a device per child, so to speak. So we've gone through our inventory, we've got the, the equipment ready. So as, when we are notified that some, that families or individuals are looking at going remote learning, there'll be a whole nother follow-up process specifically for them. And part of it will be the technology distribution, part of it will be training, you know, for them. And that's a part of the reason why we don't want to use August 31st through September 3rd as remote learning. That's going to be an opportunity for us to distribute and to provide whatever instructions necessary to get that up and running. Ultimately, the system is such that as our, as our teachers are teaching their classes, they'll also be live streaming and the students on remote learning will have the key, the code and the password to log into that live stream just like the cohort that's home for that period has as well. And so that, and then the, the learning management system will be how we are moving documents back and forth and assessments and projects and all of that. So that learning management system will facilitate the communication back and forth. But we'll have specifics the week of, of August 31st through September 3rd. And we'll have opportunities for people to come and practice, learn and problem solve prior to the 9/8 when we're up and running.
Thank you.
Dr. Kranti, anything to add on that?
I did want to just say that we're looking to try to do some parent workshops the week of August 31st. And so we can certainly include a parent workshop on remote learning as well. So we were looking to schedule some parent workshops on Seesaw, Google Classroom. And we can also include a session on the remote learning so that parents can see what they'll need to do at home in order to access the live stream that's happening in the classrooms.
Is, are all levels eligible for remote learning? Like so kindergarten, the option, have that on?
They are. Yep, they are. And that's through the state, you know, it's, attendance is still compulsory, but attended, well, participation is compulsory, but physical attendance is not, right? So kindergarteners can opt for a remote as well and we're going to, we'll figure that out when we see what the numbers are. Because our kindergarten teachers will not be live streaming in general because they're going to have the kids live each day. So we'll, we'll see where I want to see what the numbers are and then we'll figure that piece out. Okay? So this is the most complex part of it, of course, right? Getting this up and running and doing the onboarding. And then what we've done is set a couple of targets. So we're using September 21st as a target. If the metrics are improved or remain consistent and we're in the low community spread environment and the time is right during that time, we would look to move in our kindergarten through fourth grade into the fully in-person model. Again, keeping all of the mitigation strategies in place. And now we've learned them over the course of these couple of weeks and we've been able to refine them to, you know, to make sure. Then we look at the following week, excuse me, where we look at our middle school re-entry. So kindergarten through fourth remain at 100% availability. Grades five through six, the lower division looks to transition in, the upper division looks to transition in. We split that apart because it may not happen all at once. We might look at a Tuesday to bring in lower and then a Thursday to look at, bring in the upper. Because again, we're looking at a school of over 1,300 students and, you know, we just, we're stepping through it in phases. And then the following week, October 5th, we look to see, you know, is, does the data support transitioning in with our high school students and transitioning them to 100%? And so to break it down, just sort of a visual of phase one here. But it brings us, and again, this is just to help folks, but I think what'll be more helpful is to jump to appendix F. So if you'll bear with a screen scroll here, I'll just jump to that. So as you see, first month is August and this is what, you know, the board's more used to looking at something like this. We've got our, starting Wednesday, our administrative retreat. So that's part of my anxiety around time now because, you know, last, last week was, we had a lot planned to get done. And so we're, we're working overtime now, of course. The week after that, 18, 19 and 20 is our new teacher orientation. And as we can give a little bit of an update, those numbers continue to increase. And then the following week, as you'll recall, we expanded the, the couple of days in the beginning of the school year. So we have five full days of professional learning for our staff. The staff is expected to come in on those days and it'll be a blended learning environment for them where large group sorts of activities will be done remotely, you know, from their classrooms. But departments, smaller groups can get together, you know, and stay socially distant, wear their mask and do their work together. So it'll be a blended environment that will be in some ways similar to what's going to happen when our kids come back. So it's a good way to acclimate to that too. In that week, we'll have an opportunity to set up some sample classrooms and work with the technology that we have. There's already, like I mentioned, a lot of training that's been going on. So we'll continue that work. It's, it's a lot of technical work, of course, around the live streaming and the use of a learning management system and others. But at the same time, we're not forgetting about the social emotional needs of our kids. And, you know, the, the relationship building and the really important work that we have to do there as we re-acclimate them to school. Again, it's, it's important to remember that we, our students and teachers have not been in school together since March 11th. It's a very long time. And some of our students, some of our teachers haven't gone far. You know, they've really been quarantining and isolating and been very careful. So as we bring our students back, we want to make sure that, and with our staff, that everyone feels a high degree of psychological safety in the work that we're doing. Because we know that it's, it's got to be connection before curriculum. It's how this works. You know, we know that the emotional state of our learners is, is very important and is directly connected to the success of their learning. So we'll be doing that work around social emotional learning as well. And then of course, as I just mentioned, the 31st, the first, second, third, the fourth, that day. And then, so this calendar is meant to just sort of take what I just talked about, but give a, a visual that's hopefully helpful. Again, we're not, we're not opening in a hybrid, so to speak. What we're doing is we're, we've developed an onboarding plan that gets us to where we want to be, which is to have 100% of our students in school and to make sure that we do it safely and focused on, you know, everyone's wellbeing. So that's the goal. Pause for a sec. See what you think.
So if I, if you think about it, is it just the, you know, using the cohorts for the first few weeks of school? Is it, is the idea, the essential idea to create a larger buffer where you can have more physical distance in those first few weeks? Recognizing that, you know, people are coming back from summer and summer travel? Is that, is that kind of the driving force for it, Brian?
It's definitely one of them, Carl. Another is knowing that the experience of school is going to be very different for our kids because of the rules that have to be in place as these mitigation strategies. The mask wearing, one-way hallways, the schedules are different. So we want to give our students an opportunity to get comfortable doing that. We also know it's easier to form meaningful relationships with smaller groups of kids. So for those teachers in those first four days especially, but even throughout, having a smaller group in front of them gives them an opportunity to help the students feel a little more comfortable and the teachers feel a little more comfortable with them. So I think it, it's a combination of all of those, but definitely it strengthens the social distancing mitigation strategy.
And then on the, the, the yellow, orange and red, you know, low community, moderate, severe. Who sets, who's, who's doing the, who sets the, what color we're in and how quickly does that happen, you know? If it, if suddenly it goes from, you know, yellow to red and you have to shift, how much, how much time are we going to have to make changes like that?
Sure. So that's part of the work that this other committee I was just on prior to this meeting has been doing. That's a weekly report that comes from the state. That model that they're using for the, you know, yellow, orange, red comes directly from the Harvard Global Health Project in creating pandemic-resistant schools. They, the conversation we just literally had was about the, that information is one data point and a significant one, but one that we have to take and also in a local context and apply and determine locally what is the best approach. So the, with a weekly report, and it's reported out by county, not by town. You can get to the town data, but it's really, it, the variability is too great to use the numbers that they're, they're using because it's number positive per 100,000 population is the most, is that sort of primary metric. And so in a town of 20,000, a couple positives could skew that significantly, right? So they really are encouraging us to do it by county and I think that makes sense. It'll come out weekly. It'll have the other secondary data with it. I was just looking at the report. It hasn't been shared publicly yet. But the report will be thorough enough with links to get to the primary sources and to drill down if you want to, is part of the conversation. But also the, so when that data becomes available, then the next, the conversations include certainly the central office cabinet, you know, certainly Board of Ed Chair, Board of Ed and the local health department. Because Jen and the local health department will have her finger on the pulse of what's happening locally. So we take the regional data, have the conversation around the local data, talk and think about what's working locally and, you know, right in our schools and then make that informed decision. So the model we put together, we can flip in a day. And that's something I'm really proud of, you know, and Jill and Darlene and Bill and Joanne and everybody's worked really, really hard to pull that together. So it's really meant to be a fast change if need be so that our kids don't miss out and, and we can be, you know, instantly responsive. We don't want to put a system in place that takes three days to shift. If we see it's in the red or moving towards that, it's moving in that way, more quickly we can get to the next mode, the better we can contain whatever's going on. So.
So are you saying then that the, the whole county doesn't go, you know, yellow, orange, red? It's, it's, it's a local, it ends up being a local decision?
So the whole county will be reflected in the data that they'll show you as a color like that. But it, what you do with the schools and with that data becomes a local decision.
Okay.
Yep.
So if the county's red, say, and, and, you know, whatever, you guys feel like it's moderate, you can stay in orange?
Unless the governor shuts you down, right? And so the governor can still close. But yeah, you could. The opposite, not so much. I, I know there's a district, I believe there's a district that's looking to go fully remote on day one. And I believe they have to meet with the commissioner and his team and have a conversation about whether or not that's justified. The, so they're really trying to sort of balance all of, you know, all of the data we have with the flexibility within guardrails, as the commissioner mentioned.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
So I just want to say, I, I think this is a very thoughtful plan and one that prioritizes the health and safety of our students and staff and also gets them back in, in person. I, I do have a question about the construction of the cohorts. And specifically, I know you've done that by grade and splitting the alphabet in half. And I'm wondering if there was any discussion about actually, since our classes are not constructed, that we don't have, our classes are not by grade. They're, most classes are multi-grade. If there was any discussion, you know, again, you talked about the importance of connection before curriculum. If there was any discussion around constructing the cohorts and having like the senior class together as one cohort and having the junior, you know, them be X and the junior class be a Y. I'm just, just curious if you had any discussion on that?
Yeah. So when we look at something like that, what happens is you don't get the benefits of the social distancing in the classrooms that you have all the seniors, right? So we did, we did look at it, but the, the driver, one of the main drivers here is to reduce by about 50%, you know, in your, in your classrooms and what have you. So, and you're right around those mixed classes. So I think what we'll be doing throughout the year is finding ways to bring the seniors together. You know, in probably external venues and in different ways. But, you know, we also felt that it was really important to keep families together. You might have seniors who have much younger siblings that they could watch on the days that they're home, you know, for those in that, in the cohorting model. So we did look at it, Sherry, and, yeah, I have a daughter who's a senior. So I, it's near and dear to my heart.
Wait, do you have a daughter who's a senior who's, all of her friends have the first half of the alphabet, but she has the second half? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yeah, I know.
She hasn't found out what cohort she's in yet, but I can promise you it keeps her up.
Yeah. And just a follow-on question. I like what you were saying earlier about, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, we need to look at, you know, school attendance and absences a little bit differently in terms of encouraging students who have any symptoms just to stay home. And I'm just curious, like, if we're going to change, because I know we are a high, high-performing district and a lot of students are looking at and measuring their number of absences from school. And I'm just curious how that can be communicated and acculturated so that people are really clear that this is what we want. We're in a pandemic and we want any students with symptoms staying home for that day. And how will attendance be taken, you know, when we're in a hybrid model going from remote to in-person and, and back and forth?
Sure. So if a student stays home because they're not feeling 100%, but they log into the live stream and they're part of the class, they're present. They're there. That's not, that's not an absence. If students are self-select into the remote learning process or, you know, platform and they, they're logging in with the school, they're part of what's happening, they're present. So it's really, so we've set it up so students can be physically home, but still present in the class. And so there's not an absentee. And they shouldn't be because the students are still logging in and doing their work and keeping up with it. If students genuinely are sick, you know, and can't do that, then, you know, we want to know about it first off. But if they can't log into the live stream and participate, then they would be considered absent. And then also we, we want to make sure that if students, if that's happening to kids often, that we're providing whatever support they need, you know, for their own health and to help them to get back into school. So it is an important data point that we collect about our students, you know, attendance. So we've made it easy, easier to stay home and not fall behind. We will still be taking attendance if they can't log in, so we can give them support. Does that answer your question, Sherry?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question about the, on the bus aspect of this.
Yes.
So when, when we are in the cohort in the first few weeks, that seems straightforward enough is that half the people get on the bus each day and half the people won't. What about the kindergarten though? That seems like a pretty complicating wrinkle of, you know, the two, the two times spots during the day. So how's that being addressed? And then once everyone's back to school as anticipated in a few weeks, you know, what is the thinking on the buses potentially being, you know, as full as they typically are?
Sure. The, so with the kindergarteners, we've worked it out. So they would ride, the AM group will ride on the morning buses and then they'll be taken home in just a kindergarten only run. And then they'll be picked up, the PM group is picked up on a kindergarten only run, and then they ride home with buses, you know, in grades K through four. So we're able to build that extra run in the middle of the day to, to move kids back and forth that way. When we do get to 100% in, we're no longer in an AM PM kindergarten.
Right.
100% in for K4 means kindergarteners are all in every day, you know, for the full day. And, and that's, you know, that's what we, we try to work towards. The, just today, our principals were walking their sites with a PD to get some ideas and some feedback around traffic flow and how best to, to move cars around because we are anticipating that some families that used bus transportation in the past may opt to drive their children in next year. So we're looking at the sites to see what that flow could be. The buses, as you know, just like in school, in the seats in the classroom, it is a mandatory accommodation for our family. So anyone who needs a bus gets a bus. So we route everybody and balance out that way. And then, you know, when people do opt to come on the bus, there's a spot for them. We did go so far as to redesign our routes based on the hybrid model, so to optimize the buses that we have. So it's not that we just run the same routes and pick up, you know, whoever's happens to be on our route. But Roy actually went through and has been rebuilding those routes to optimize the resources of buses and the number of kids to balance those out as, as best as he could. It was a lot of work for him, but he's gotten really good at redesigning routes after last year. So the, so we, we would use that system first and then, you know, beginning where we start bringing everybody in, we would start, we'd flip to, you know, the, the other routes. My expectation on the buses is similar to the remote learning. In the beginning, we may have a significant number opt not to use the buses who had used the buses in the past. I think once we get up and running and people building confidence in the work that we're doing, I think student, more and more will start taking the bus and we'll have it ready for.
Question on, like, elementary age students. I'm hearing a lot about, like, this concept of learning pods. I'm sure you guys are hearing the two, but are we doing anything as a district to support that or not support that? Or what's the, what's the thinking around that?
You know, the, the system we put in place for remote learning is different than, say, pod learning, right? So remote learners are logged into the, during the school day, they're part of the class, they're interacting with the teacher and they're, they're doing that. Some families, I believe, are exploring having somebody with their child for, like a tutor that's working with their child. But if they're truly going to form a pod with a different, a different teacher that would operate kind of separately from the school system, then that's really more of a withdrawal situation where they would withdraw from the school and homeschool their child for that period of time. They can always, you know, re-enroll and re-enter as residents of the town, but we can't, we can't support a parallel, a, a different curriculum, you know, and parallel processes that way. You just, it's too variable to try to take a, you know, try to take something to scale like that for us. Our system needs to be flexible enough to allow students to opt in and out and to do the other things we've talked about, so.
Thanks.
In terms of cleaning, is there a, what's the, going to be the protocol at the high school, you know, between classes? I mean, we have the push-in model at the middle school that minimizes or helps cohort students, but how, how are we going to handle it at the high school?
Sure. It's one of the reasons high school is the last to transition in fully because the cohorting at the high school is, it, it's just a very different model. The scheduling is a different model, whatever. So we'll have cleaning supplies available for teachers. We'll have our custodians on and we're looking at shifting their times and shifts and possibly bringing in some more help to be able, because there's cleaning of the bathrooms, cleaning cafeteria and other things. But really, the cleaning itself occurs at the end of each day. It doesn't occur between classes. But, you know, our students will be wearing masks and then they'll have opportu, they'll have supplies for any student and any, any teacher, anybody else to try to help them. But we just, you just can't do it in between classes. The high school moving to a block schedule helps with this because instead of having, you know, five or seven different classes in a room on any given day, you know, the most you can have is four groups of kids in any one classroom over the course of the day. So that helps with the, the cleaning in between. And the high school is extending their passing time from five minutes to seven minutes, both because of one-way hallways, but also so students can go wash their hands and, you know, follow these guidelines and practices that we're talking about. And we're also looking and working through the ventilation systems, as you know, in all of our buildings. And that's a, a big part of it, too.
Shutting down the hand dryers for this?
Yeah. Yep. Sorry about that, guys. The, the hand dryers have all been disconnected and we're reinstalling the paper towel dispensers that are, that Dan had the foresight to hold on to when we took them down. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Sure.
Can you talk about the face mask requirement and how that will be enforced?
Sure. So again, on the call that I was just on, this, it's a group of statewide epidemiologists from Yale, from UConn, Dr. Carter State Epidemiologist, others. And what they continue to say on the call is essentially, there's no counter indication for mask wearing. If a student's not well enough to wear a mask, then it's highly probable that student's not well enough to be in school. The exception being very few of our students with significant sensory issues. So it is our expectation that all students and staff will be wearing masks in the school. It's also the state's expectation that everybody will be doing that. It's part of our, our teaching in the very beginning is to help people understand that wearing a mask protects them and protects others. And, and it's a really, a very important mitigation strategy as you layer one on top of the other. We, and the state has found that students are able to do this. That it's, you know, in the summer programs that occurred around the state, they were required to wear masks throughout the course of the day and they did, and they were okay with it. We're thinking a lot about mask breaks and those things I talked about, but the, it's, it's an expectation. And the state, I'm expect, I'm hoping, anticipating that they will come out with guidance that essentially says the same as what I just said. If they're not wearing, well enough to wear a mask, then they're very likely not well enough to be in school and should probably be on remote learning.
Right, thank you.
We are also looking at opportunities for outdoor learning, as you may have seen in the document, which again, helps as well. We've got some tents in some places. We're looking at wifi availability outside, looking to get it to some places where it doesn't exist right now. And, you know, all of those things will help. Will help our kids, help our teachers, help the comfort level, everything else to get outside on a nice day and do some teaching outdoors. Wifi has to be there because we're live-serving our classrooms for the kids, students who are home during that time. So we're working through what that, what that looks like. Okay. So I do want to share that Katrina, Joanne and I had a, a very positive conversation this morning with Todd Labriari from the Board of Finance Chair. We shared with him that the non-lapsing account has been quite helpful for us, right? Beneficial for us in taking solutions to scale. However, the initial sort of concept of the funding is less than we're going to need to do everything we have to do to get up and running. So we had a, a great conversation with Todd. He's looking into a couple of different options. We're going to touch base with him again. We are going to the Board of Finance on Wednesday night to share an update. Just as a point of reference, you know, our Board of Finance agreed initially to fund it at $400,000. Because we haven't closed out the books yet, there's still a potential to change that, you know, that initial funding because the, the way a non-lapsing account works is it's money that's not expended in a board of that budget the prior year that can go into a non-lapsing account and fund it. So until you close out the books, there's still an opportunity to, to adjust that amount. As just a point of reference, we, like, talking to the surrounding superintendent about costs, the question came up and without getting into any specifics, essentially districts in our region directly, you know, or right around us are anticipating spending between 1.5 and 7.5 million dollars in response to COVID related expenses. So we shared that with Todd and some other conversation and he's going to take a look at things. And it was really a very productive conversation. And certainly Katrina, Joanne, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, we ask for some operational flexibility in light of the fact that, you know, that these items are not in our budget. And obviously, we would proceed with fiscal prudence. But I, I think it was a very positive conversation, as Brian suggested, and we look forward to continuing the conversation with them on Wednesday night.
Brett, do we, can you just remind us what, what we underspent roughly our budget last, last year? And do we expect that we're going to be sort of within that zip code of a need or potentially, you know, beyond that as we head into the year? And I realize there's a lot we don't know, to say the least. But, but you kind of put that in perspective for us.
Sure. And again, Dr. Kitting, feel free to jump in. The, well, I mean, as we're closing out the books, as you know, and I'm thinking about this year's budget, you know, the 2021 budget. It was, was a particularly challenging budget season. As you know, we were reduced, not just the school start time amount, but also the, you know, by over $500,000 on top of that. So we were running pretty lean to begin with coming into this year and certainly nobody had anticipated these kinds of costs. So the money that has been allocated for 2021 is really.
It's tight.
Tight, right.
Very tight.
Yeah.
Arguably below what we need, particularly with the number of kids signing up to.
Well, that's, that's, the staffing piece is a challenge, right? And you could certainly, I would make the argument that it's COVID related. You know, we know what the real estate market's doing. We know what the rental market's doing. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've had to add four teachers over at our middle school due to enrollment increases that were unanticipated. So these are, these are real challenges that are coming as a result of the environment, you know, where we are. So because of the closure last year, we were able to close in a, you know, with, in the black, I guess, with, I guess it's close around $2 million. We don't know exactly what the number's going to be until we finalize the books, but I think 2 million's a fair estimate. You know, of that, in the initial conversation with the finance, they talked about the 400,000. But I know that, you know, that it'll be, like I said, around the two. The non-lapsing accounts by state statute can go up to 2% of your operating budget. So you figure our operating budget is a little over 90 million, so it's a little north of 1.8 million. As a, as a max, that could be. Do we anticipate needing all of that? You know, we've got a couple of weeks left, you know, as we look at, run up to the school year. We still don't know for sure what the enrollment's going to look like as we kind of sort of, and sort of move out of that, had the hiring phase. We are keeping our classes within the school, the class size guidelines. You know, it's, we're using that as our guide. And we've got some that are really very close to the, to the top of the guideline again. So we've got to keep a close eye on those. The hard numbers, well, I guess you can pretty quickly get to probably 1.5 million when you start to look at the things that are needed. And that may be, you know, without all the stuff that's required. Again, Dr. Kitting, you're welcome to add a little more to that, I feel.
So as of today, we're just south of 600,000 out of the current year's budget. So we're already beyond the 400,000 by 200,000. And then on top of that, we do have the staffing piece, which is also going to include supervision, TAs and cleaners. So we're in the process of looking for those folks. We had quite a few interviews today for cleaner. In addition to that, we have final pieces on the technology, which include the wifi, but also we're looking at solutions right now to improve the live streaming so that the audio is better and the visuals for the kids at home and the students in the classroom is well improved over what we currently have. And those, that solution could be in the hundreds of thousands. We're just really trying to get our, wrap our arms around that piece of it. So I think, you know, we've talked about it at, at Resources at length, a week or so ago, and we shared that conversation today with Todd. And we believe that, not that we're going to spend it all, but we would appreciate, you know, going in and, and increasing that non-lapsing account considerably.
The staffing. Yeah, I mean, yeah, sorry, just to, one last thing. I mean, the way I kind of think about that is it's just shifting, shifting what we didn't spend last year into this coming year as a result of obviously extraordinary circumstances. So from a town perspective, it's really no, you know, no change at the end of the day if we're, you know, better by $2 million last year and worse by $2 million this coming year because, you know, we have to do all the things that we know we need to do for COVID, for health and the fact that we were, to begin with, incredibly tight in a year where, you know, many new families are moving into town to have their kids attend school, which by the way, you know, from an economic standpoint, kind of pays for itself when, when you have, you know, tens or hundreds of families, you know, buying homes that they might not otherwise have done. So, and. Cool. It was a huge part of it. Sorry. Hand the mic over.
I was just going to ask on the staffing, like for cleaners, for example, is that like a short term need with that? Is that something that you hire employees or you give out your contractors so that sort of when the COVID cleaning bubble goes by, we, you know, you, you just sort of, it's an, it's an outsourced, kind of an operation as opposed to employees? I'm just curious, how, how are you approaching that?
Sure. So as, our district, as, you know, we have a, a union and a contract with that union, so we can't hire an outside service to do, you know, do their work. But we're looking at, you know, one-year employees, you know, looking at it. And when we're hiring them, we're letting them know. We also do anticipate that there may be some retirements and other attrition. So if folks come in and they're, you know, good, strong employees, we may, would hopefully, you know, be able to transition them right into those roles. But we, yeah, we looked at, just by contract, we can't use an outside server.
Got it. Is that something we would go to the union in this kind of an environment and ask them for, you know, some flexibility there? Would that be?
I think it'd be, we'd probably be hard pressed to do it, but what we are looking for is some flexibility around the shifts in the hours that they're working because we may also be able to extend some hours here and there to not have to increase headcount. You know, so we're looking at some options there, too. The, our contract has shift hours and we're looking, you know, we're going to talk to them about maybe flexing that a little bit.
I, I have a couple of questions. The first would be for, for Joanne. Could you give it, you gave us some indication, could you give us a, some of the big buckets of the incremental spending that's been required this year, you know, in terms of the 400, I think you mentioned that's already been spent? And some of the anticipated needs, you mentioned the technology and that seems like an obvious one. And, you know, as you kind of think of like getting to a 1.8 type number, what are the big areas of, of spending? And that's, that's question one. And then the two is on enrollment. I'm just, is that kind of just now real time, just as families are enrolling? Is that how you're figuring out numbers at this point?
It is. Yeah. Yeah. These are folks that walk in the door on, on Tuesday and we're finding a class for them on Thursday, you know, bringing the paperwork in.
Sure. So I could.
Just quickly.
First part.
Just, sorry, I was just going to ask quickly on enrollment. Do you have an update on the enrollment number? Sorry, I was just going to ask quickly on enrollment, do you have an update on the enrollment numbers as to where we are? Here over here.
Without last week, we would, um, but I think it'd be better to give it a couple of days to shake out and we'll get something to you via email and we'll talk about it at our, the special meeting we're looking to schedule in a couple of weeks.
So I mean, was there a significant, was there a significant jump last week?
No, with the storm, uh, appointments that were made weren't kept and things like that.
Okay. Gotcha. Yeah.
All right. So we, we do have some buckets that might be helpful for you. The technology right now stands at 189. So that's everything from, you know, balancing out our one-to-one and with the end users to just peripherals and software and that sort of thing. The Zoom license was significant. It was 27,000 out of that number. Then we go to, there's a lot of things that we used to share with students in terms of supplies, in terms of, you know, classroom books and, and different things like that. And we had to individualize a lot of supplies and containers for our students at the lower level. And so that has really, and there's, there's going to be some more of that. We had a few things that came through today, but we spent 167,000 going from shared to individualized at the lower level. With regards to barriers like plastic barriers or things that teachers can put, mobile things that teachers can put in front of them to separate them with students when they have to basically see them talking. And signage has cost us 146,000 and we think we're right at the end of that. We, Brian and I were talking last week about this. We had priced out purchasing a lot of our barriers from outside sources and it would have cost us easy a half a million dollars. But our staff, our, our maintenance staff actually fabricated most of our shields, our barriers for the classrooms. So we have in the lower level where there's tables, separating them out for the little guys to be able to sit at the same table and then our cafeteria tables. So our maintenance staff really stepped up on that one. Sanitation stations and PPE, we spent a lot of, some money out of last year's budget to get a head start on this because we knew it would be hard to find. But we had to purchase, we purchased sanitation stations for the entrance areas throughout the schools and then for the cafeterias. And those cost 63,000. And then there's a combination of little things that come to 40,000 so far under other. We had to get an, um, storage containers for the schools because you have so much stuff inside the classrooms that had to come out that we can no longer keep in there because it has to be cleaned and we can't have poor surfaces in there. So that was like 14,000, um, just to name a few, but little things came up to about 40,000. So we're just below 600,000 right now. And, um, or around 600,000. So moving forward, the big items that we have are staffing. And we, we can't really nail that down right now because it's going to depend on a number of different things that we just experienced annually, like turnover savings. Now, we've added staff, but we may have additional turnover savings based on, you know, the number of retirements we've had. So that has to be worked through to the beginning of September, mid-September. And we'll have a better handle on those numbers. And then the technology piece, which is really two things, the wifi and the classroom learning, live stream learning pieces that we've talked about. So we're thinking, you know, I don't know, anywhere between double that, 1.2 million to 1.5 million, it's going to be hard to say until we actually have, you know, those numbers now down.
And again, there may be some opportunity for reimbursement for these COVID-related expenses down the line as well. And so we're, you know, we're reporting out with Linda and Billisman and others at the town hall to keep track of everything.
Not to, from the state or the feds?
Yeah, the feds.
Means just another good reason why it makes sense to keep it in its own account.
Right. And when you look at it, we sent $2 million back to the town. They gave us 400 of that for this non-lapsing account, which has really been a blessing for us this summer. But, you know, they put that money aside in the fund balance of the town and they put that money aside for emergencies, unplanned things. And this is, is about as clear of a definition of an unplanned event that you can come up with. And it's mostly one-time spending. So to go for a special appropriation and increase our operating budget baseline, it makes more sense to really look at this like a capital item and putting it into a non-lapsing account.
Yeah, I would. I mean, my perspective on a, you know, subjecting a bunch of spending that we know we're going to have to do this year to a special appropriation down the road is just, you know, absolutely not appropriate, given the circumstances that we're in and the fact that that money is sitting there from last year unspent. So it, it's my view that we need to make sure that we have adequate funds going into the school year, you know, to cover these one-time issues and, and frankly, also to make sure that we have, you know, room in the budget to cover the additional staff that we need, given our, you know, number of students.
Yeah, definitely. And I think I'll just echo with what Katrina and Brian said. We did have this conversation with Todd today and I think it went well because he understood, you know, all the points we've just made. And, you know, he, we processed it with him and I think it really stuck with him or resonated with him about the non-lapsing account. So we'll see how it goes on.
That's great. It's good to hear.
Yep. So the, uh, a couple of things I just want to mention just about our reopening. You know, one is the, uh, one of the things we've been working on and thinking a lot about is if our surrounding districts use a similar model to ours where students aren't in every day, we could have a number of teachers who run into some trouble around childcare. And if we open up, you know, the way that we are, we could have some families that do. So I wanted to let the board know that I've been in conversation with the YMCA and also the New Canaan Nature Center, let them know our planning and thinking and they've been wonderful in sort of, in offering the step forward and put programs together for our staff's children and for the community and for others. So we did let them know early about what's going on and so they're talking, you know, thinking about what's the best approach and they may be staffing up and other things to help to meet that need, you know, as it arises. August 31st is the first day for kindergarten. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. That would be X in the morning, Y in the afternoon. We do that, that day with all of them. And again, as we mentioned before, the remote learning would take place beginning on September 8th. And then we use the week before, the 31 through the 3rd to, uh, to provide training, webinar, device distribution, other things like that so that we're ready for the 8th. So, so that's the piece. Now there's, one of the questions that does often come up is sort of what happens with a positive case? So the, at the end of the charting our course document, I put in what's called Addendum 5, which is the, the rules that were developed, oh, that's right, actually, that were developed by this group. And it's always subject to change and that's always the danger when you put in things like this. But this is from the group specifically that I've been working with, interim guidance for responding to COVID-19 scenarios in Connecticut school districts. And essentially, I'll just use one as an example and then, you know, folks want to go on, then look at the others, they're welcome too. But if we have an individual who has COVID-19 symptoms, but has not had close contact to a person diagnosed with COVID-19. So we've got someone with, with the fevers, with the loss of sense of taste or smell or whatever. You know, it's, if they're home, they should stay home, notify us immediately. If they're at school, then we've created an isolation, uh, space, isolation room in every one of the buildings where anyone who's symptomatic with COVID would go before they get picked up, right? So it's sort of isolate them out of the general population. Of course, if it's an adult, they just go, get their cargo. But for students that need to be picked up, if it happens on the bus, they keep their mask on and go right into the, right to the nurse's office. If it's in the classroom, they're sent to the nurse's office. With those symptoms, they're, they go to the isolation room. Okay? The testing results, so I'm working with the, again, with Jen in the Health Department, who's been an amazing partner with all of this and with Janet Reed and David Reed and Stanford Hospital, setting all these things up. People really come together as a great team. So we're working on creating a hotline essentially for anyone who is symptomatic, is concerned, where they can call a number, go in that day and get a test and get, get relatively rapid results. So that's a big part of, of our strategy. If that individual tests negative, then that person can return to school once there's no symptoms for 24 hours. If the test is positive, they stay home, monitor their symptoms, stay in self-isolation for at least 10 days. And if the individual's not tested, then it's a presumed positive, right? And they stay in isolation for 10 days. Now, the close contact, the definition of close contact follows the CDC definition, which is spending at least 15 minutes within six feet of a person with a confirmed case. Okay. So with that one case, if it's negative, then, you know, you don't have to do any of the contact tracing or anything else. If an individual, let's see. This is generally the one that folks think about the most. If an individual does not have COVID-19 symptoms, but has had close contact to someone who's diagnosed with COVID-19. So again, close contact being the definition, by definition, within six feet for 15 minutes or longer. Okay? And so this person does not have symptoms, but had that close contact, that's where we have that person stay home for a period of time, get tested. And as you'll see, even if the test is negative, we ask them to quarantine for 14 days from their last exposure to the positive case, if it meets that definition of close contact. So in the conversation today, and we're working on building out scenarios to sort of put this in practice, a classroom of students, if they're socially distanced and wear masks and what have you, that you, it's not safe to just assume that that whole classroom has had close contact with everybody. You can be on opposite sides of a classroom with a mask and not within six feet. It could be on a, on a Monday that the student tests positive and we know that, or the individual, it could be a teacher too, that person tests positive, we know that it's 24, 48 hours that you're shedding the virus. So you may not have to do anything if it's a Monday, but if it's a Friday, you may have to do things. This is where contact tracing comes in and we will be doing contact tracing directly with positive cases in our schools with the assistance of the Health Department. And so schools working in partnership with Health Department will be doing that. But it's very, very complicated when you start to go sort of a little bit deeper. But the assumption that if there's a positive case in a room, you automatically quarantine everyone that's been in that room is a bit oversimplistic. And that's why this, the guidance has taken so long to put out. So I'm not, I'm not here to say I have all the answers, but I just wanted to share with you sort of where the state is and their thinking with this, where the epidemiologists are and, uh, and where we are, you know, and sort of in understanding this and working with our Health Department. You guys talk.
A question about, um, about that. And, and particularly as I look at an elementary classroom, um, you know, because I don't, if, if we get to, to the point where we're, you know, in late September, early October, I, I, I mean, and please correct me if I'm incorrect in this assumption. I'm not sure that we'll be able to get six feet between all kids in each individual classroom. So if I look at this guidance, um, to me, that would say that it would send a whole classroom home for 14 days in a, in a, in an elementary classroom environment. I don't know about some of the other classrooms, but, so I, I'd just like you to talk through that a little bit more.
Yeah, sure. The, uh, that is the structure and purpose design of a cohort model we're putting in place, right? So that if you have a positive case, you could quarantine a cohort, but school can continue to function. The conversation now is, would you have to if the positive case is a, an individual sitting on one side of the room? And you have an individual on the other side of the room and they don't intermingle? They have not been in a group, they don't sit together at lunch, they've not been together within six feet for 15 minutes or longer? And they haven't had that close contact and when they have been, you know, in the classroom, whenever they've been wearing the mask, perhaps you don't have to. I'm not, again, this is not decided, this is the ongoing discussion. The system we have has enough, I believe, resiliency that we could have a class cohort have to be quarantined and not miss a beat on our instruction. Because our teacher would also be able to provide that remote instruction to all of them remotely over those two weeks and then they come back in afterwards. So I believe we have that built into our system. They're still working out what this means. I did push back on the six feet, right? That we can do six feet at 50%, but we can't be sure of six feet when we do 100%. And it's sort of hung out there and it's to be taken up by the subcommittee that I'll be participating in.
One other question and I, you may not have the answer yet, but, um, teachers, um, you know, how, so would, I guess, if, if the teacher tests positive and, you know, the, the assumption is that cohort would go out, so the teacher potentially would be live streaming from home? Or we would be getting substitutes to, um, teach that class? I mean, could you just talk through that a lot? Cause I'm sure a lot of questions.
So if a teacher has to quarantine because of something in, outside of school, so if a significant other gets, uh, tests positive and they have to quarantine, then, um, that, one of the approaches we're looking at is to have that teacher teach remotely from home. If they're well, you know, they're not ill, they're not showing symptoms, they can do that, teach remotely from home. We still would have somebody in the, in the room, we need an adult in the classroom. So we'd have a substitute in the room with the students. And they actually call that an avatar, right? So like somebody has sort of the avatar in the room for the teacher. But if that teacher can continue moving forward and teaching the kids and they have the relationship and it, it can work well, we certainly would support that.
And so just, just to kind of circle back to the, um, non-lapsing account, would you see sort of these avatars sort of at, being part of the, you know, necessary additional funding for the year?
Yeah, I would. I mean, that is definitely another COVID-related cost that we would have to incur. You know, because essentially we're, we're paying for two teachers in the room on that day.
And I don't mean to insult any teacher by calling it, or any substitute by calling them that.
No, no, we didn't make that up. Cause there are some states that are using that term and actually they're hiring pre-service teachers who are seniors in a college, instead of doing student teaching, they're hiring them into the building to become what they're calling avatars while teachers teach from remote locations. So it's another creative solution.
I'd like to talk to somebody about the language, but that's okay. Yeah, thank you.
Fine. Question on, uh, testing and availability of testing. So once a school year begins and we have anybody, a staff member or a student or even family member who requires testing, do we have, I mean, I understand that we were working on a partnership and, you know, kind of a standard process that everybody would use to access testing and then I assume the results will be reported back to the Health Department.
That's right. Yep. The results do get reported back to the Health Department. The, it's also important to note, um, you know, we, we're partners with the New Canaan Health Department. We have our medical advisor, Dr. Pierce. The town has their medical advisor, Dr. Reed, you know, and all of that, they are all part of our team now, right? Our student health team. And they will have access to data on individual students, you know, health around this because we're in a pandemic. So they, they will be working on our behalf from time to time. For instance, the question about masks before that came up. If a student does have, you know, a, a note from a doctor for a medical reason that not to wear a mask, then we would expect one of our, either Dr. Reed, Dr. Pierce, to reach out to that doctor directly and have a conversation with them to, to really understand it. Uh, and they'll be working on our behalf. So through, you know, they'll have access to, um, to records that, you know, FERPA records as our sort of agents, the administrations and the board's agents, uh, doing this work on our behalf, uh, on behalf of community and public health. They, they do anyway, as you know, but I just think it's important to note that it really is a team approach, that we're all working together through this. The, so when, whenever anyone in New Canaan takes a test, those results do go to the New Canaan Health Department, confidentially, of course. And the only data that, you know, I'm privy to is data in the aggregate, not individual data. And that's in order to get the information needed to determine those, those community spread levels and make the right decisions about it.
And then what, how, do we have a, a central location for all testing? Will be, will we be partnering with Stanford Hospital or is it up to the family to choose? I'm just wondering about availability and state of testing and results and things like that, if you could, if there's plans in place for the school year.
Sure. So we're actually, um, providing a testing opportunity for staff prior to the opening of the school year, the week before PD starts. So that's, it's voluntary, of course, but we are providing that. And then the, what we're anticipating is a partnership with Stanford Hospital. Where we'd be at Stanford Hospital, there may be another, uh, group as well that partners with us. But for Janet would have a number that she could give to people who need it. Uh, and again, it becomes that, a hotline idea where there's a concern, they can make a call. they can make a call, get tested, and get results relatively quickly. And so Stanford Hospital, thanks to Dr. Reed, who's been doing a wonderful work over there for us, you know, on our behalf. And then there's another group that we worked with with great success recently, who may also, who may be a second option for people. Of course, they're welcome to go to their own primary care and their own doctor and do it that way, too. We just want, again, it's about simplifying and expediting as much as we can. Because we know surveillance is an important dimension of keeping our schools open.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think, I think the key is just to have rapid access to tests because, you know, families certainly would be concerned if, if they've been, have a student exposed, or even a teacher.
So, sorry, one question on, which you probably don't want to hear at this point. It's, is any sense as to what's going to happen with sports? Or is that something that the state is still considering?
So that was on my list, but you know, I wasn't sure when to bring it up. I wasn't sure when to bring it up. Now, I just don't like to end on a sad note. But today, the football committee met, and I believe they're, they recommended that football be moved to the spring. And I know the other sports committees are, are meeting. And, you know, about each of the fall sports, they're all meeting this, these couple of days, and they'll be making their recommendations to the C I A C board. But I did, there was reported today that the football committee recommended the spring. I don't know the details of that. We know obviously moving a sport or multiple sports, sort of crowding a season could be really problematic for kids. So I don't have those details. But the original plan was to really bring everyone back, start slow, lots of practice and conditioning, and try to do some regional play. But that just shifted, I think, today based on the committee.
Yeah, I know it's not, you know, totally in our power, but you know, maybe finding a way to, even without, you know, seasons, you know, have some sort of activity, even if it's New Canaan only, to be able to get kids, you know, even small groups out there and playing, you know, and spending some time after school or whenever it may be to remain active, I just think is, it's so important for, for our kids, particularly without, you know, sort of regular physical education on a day-to-day basis in school. I think that's, that's going to be really important. And I know, I'm sure, you know, you and many others across the state are thinking about that, and it's evolving so quickly. But I think that's something we really need to figure out how to do.
Agreed.
Also, oh, sorry.
Can you send that, that response to other after-school, non-athletic, but other after-school extracurricular clubs and enrichment programs? Would those be running, or?
You know, we have not sat down with them, with a list, so to speak, yet. We're going to look at them case by case. We'd like to offer as many opportunities for our kids as we can. You know, if you pre, just think back to, you know, before March and all of our experiences with this, all of our schools, they're the busiest places in town, even on the weekends for the most part, right? This is, it's a very active and engaged place. So we're going to, we have to look at them individually and see what we can do. And, and we may create some new ones. You know, more outdoor clubs, more things, more different activities that can happen. You know, utilizing space and getting outside. So we're going to keep our mind open with a goal of maximizing opportunities for kids to participate. And even in this model where it's alternating days coming into school, certain clubs and things, we may allow students to come after school, even if it's not their day to be there, to participate. So we're looking at that, too.
That's a great idea.
Switching gears a little bit. Actually, first, let me just say, I think that, that, you know, outdoor programming, you know, when you have lemons, try to make some lemonade, and you know, to use those nimpus to do more outdoor, you know, programming, you know, real life, out, you know, learning natural environment. I think it's, I think it's a great idea. On, on the, on the, the training programs for the teachers, just wanted to get some more detail on that. And in particular, with regard to gearing it to, to be responsive to the survey work that was done. And I think, you know, a large takeaway from the survey was about student engagement, you know, keeping the students, you know, more engaged, and actually monitoring when they are, you know, not being engaged. And that is consistent with what I observed as a parent, you know, in my household as well. So that's not too surprising that that came up in the survey work. So just, you know, any comments with regard to that training and how to, how to address that, that feedback we got from the community?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, and Dr. Kranti's certainly welcome to jump in. But the kindergarten shift is in direct response to that feedback and on that survey. Knowing that our youngest learners would be the most challenged in a kind of remote environment, certainly that, that brought out. Our approach in the spring, you know, we had work going back and forth using, using email, using, you know, all the tools at our disposal. What we didn't have was a management system like CSO. So we think that's going to be beneficial for our youngest learners as well. And so we're doing some training, that's part of the training on the 24th is going to be focused on how best to utilize that, and even the training for parents and others, as Jill mentioned before. We're, another shift at the elementary level is this synchronous planning, which we actually did at the high school and the middle school as well, where there are, students are expected to log in at a certain time and to be with their class. Instead of, here are the activities for the day, it's, hey, your class is starting, you need to go to class, you know? So logging in and being there, which should help with engagement, I think significantly, because they're going to be synchronously online with other people. So they'll be, it'll be virtual, but they'll be with other people at the same time versus there's work that needs to get done and turned in, and the communication only being, you know, in writing through email or whatever. I mean, our teachers did a wonderful job. But I think that's certainly the feedback from the survey was about keeping the connections going. And we believe that that happens best by doing the synchronous learning.
And certainly, as we're looking at K-12, but certainly in particular K-6, we are really taking a deep look at feedback. So how do you engage students through the feedback that you're giving to them? So not only is there feedback that needs to happen in writing, but there needs to be feedback that happens face-to-face. And whether that's in your classroom, or whether that's virtually, that's what keeps students involved in what they're learning. And that allows them to understand where they're making their mistakes, how to correct their mistakes, what they're doing exceptionally well at, and how they continue to grow. So we're having all of that dialogue with the teachers during that first week. We've also created some guidelines for remote learning and for distance learning that we'll be sharing out certainly with the teachers. And then there's also some guidelines that we're going to ask families to follow as far as when to sign in, how to follow the schedule, what are some of the expectations that we would have for students at home while they're virtually, you know, involved in a classroom. So that's all going to kick off right at the beginning of the year, where last year was kind of, we were phasing it in as we were going along. And so we understand where we need to make those improvements based on the surveys that we've received. It was nice to be able to break it apart, K-6 and 712, because we definitely saw differences between those survey results. And I think we're prepared to try to help make some improvements so that all kids can learn and progress and feel actively a part of a classroom with their teachers.
Okay, that's great to hear, Jill. Because yeah, that's one of the things that I observed is that when you don't have that one-to-one or direct, you know, feeling of communication, you can, you kind of, you can, you can drift. And, you know, one of my learners in my household, you know, they, they're in a situation where they need to be in the front seat in the classroom, you know, to, to remain engaged. So it becomes even more, you know, important. He's a wonderful student and a wonderful kid. But you know, he just, that's just how he is. And so you need to recognize those differences in, in, in students and, and meet them, you know, where they, where they are.
And I think what's also, what's also important in starting out with the hybrid, as Brian mentioned, is really helping to develop those connections with students. So when we went out in March, our teachers knew our students extremely well. They had relationships with the students, and they knew when they were performing at their best during that distance learning and when they were sliding and not performing at their best. So we really have that opportunity in those first three weeks when we're-
I think Jill just froze.
I was worried it was, I was worried it was me again.
Me, too.
Everybody starts moving. Yeah. We lost you, Jill. Okay.
Brian, if we're done with the schedule, could you take that off the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Brian, could you, I think it would be helpful for parents just to hear one more time, and for us as well, just what are the remaining, what are all the touchpoints between tonight and the 31st with parents, between the survey and just providing a lot of this information on the website and things like that? I think it would be helpful.
Sure, wish I had a calendar up. The-
Calendar will be, will be available on the website, yes?
That's right. Yeah, yeah, definitely. I couldn't resist. So here, it's August 10th. So what we're planning is that we will be tomorrow sending out a survey. Now, it'll be, it's a little complex because we want to be sure that our kindergarteners are separated, you know, are incoming K, because it is different for them. So we'll have something separate that goes out to incoming K, and then everything else for grades one through 12. So that will go out tomorrow. Really, with this, with the calendar that was up and other information to help make sure people understand it and links back to the charter of course, that will be for us to gather that information. And then, you know, we'll be, usually, it's about the end of the administrative retreat that we're sending out classroom assignments, right? So it's usually at our elementary, so it's probably around that similar time, the week of the 17th. That would be going out. The opportunities for, and we're going to be meeting and talking about this at our administrative retreat, hi, Jill, around communication plans for each of the buildings. But I know that certainly the high school, middle school, and maybe some of the others are creating opportunities to meet with students virtually, to talk about reentry, talk about the experience and everything that's going to happen. And it's likely that that'll probably, that'll happen the week of the 24th, as we do that. The parents that identify that they're planning to select remote learning, so self-selected to remote learning, will have follow-up with them to get more information and to identify their needs. Because again, the week of the 24th and the 31st will have opportunities for parents to participate in webinars about various things that'll be happening, as we mentioned before, both the CSO and the learning management programs and what have you. So there's going to be quite a bit of communication over these next three weeks, both from the district and from the individual buildings. We're glad to share more details as they get sort of developed at a building level over the next couple of days.
Jerry has a question. You're on mute.
So Brian, can you, sorry, can you hear me? So does, so I'm assuming when students get their schedules, is that when they'll be notified of which cohort they're a part of? So that they know their schedule?
Sure, although we've kept it consistent so people know. So A through K is X, and L through Z is Y.
And, and so again, also to clarify, so there's going to be parent and also then student webinars, especially for the high school students. So the high school students will have an opportunity, okay? And that'll be the August 24th and the 31st. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
And just a request, if we could add maybe a little detail either on the website or in the plan, on the Wednesdays, the one-half days of instruction, which will be through September and early October for the high school, just so parents who are planning childcare know exactly, you know, the time, the dismissal time for half-days. And even if you could add some detail on what the students can expect, is that going to be meeting every class but in expedited fashion? Or, you know, what, what that half-day schedule will look like? I think that would be helpful for people.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely write that out. At a high level, just very quickly, the half-day, we're not serving lunch. Students will come in, so the high school, they'll have all four of their blocks. They'll be about 50 minutes long, each one, but they'll have all four. The middle school will be shortening its schedule as well, but running, you know, the students through all of them, I believe. The, it's a, it is a shorter day because we're not offering lunch. But again, we feel it's more, it's more valuable to get the kids in there than not. We want to see them face-to-face and do it. So it's probably about a three, three-and-a-half hour day between drop-off and pickup. But the, we are going to get, you know, have all four blocks at the high school level on that day. And we're just one, two, three, four, with no, with no lunch. But we'll get it right now. Jill?
Just, well, thank you so much for this. I mean, I, I know the hours and hours that you guys have all put into this, and it's incredible. So thank you so much. I just want to ask quickly about the outdoor learning spaces, which I think is such a great idea. But I, you know, we always have a concern of safety. And so can you maybe speak to that a little bit about what's going to be done on the campuses? Just to make sure the kids are safe.
Sure, yeah, you know, that's, that's a great point, Jen, thank you. The, in, in doing all this, we've had to make lots of hard decisions, right? One of them was about sort of parent volunteers in the buildings and what to do around safety and security outside of the buildings. Because, you know, we're going from a place where we, all the doors are locked and you get buzzed in to talking about teaching outside. So it is a big shift, but it is, we're prioritizing along the way. So the, we are looking at, you know, we're not going to be able to have volunteers or P T C or P F A meetings or other things in the building. Because we, just like when you're at home and you're quarantining, you sort of protect the envelope, we have to do the same thing in our schools. It's, and hopefully it doesn't last that long, but in the beginning, certainly, as we're in, you know, in this re-engagement period as we watch community spread. Outdoors, we've had conversation with Roy, with our TAs and others. As you know, we have our drivers for special education vans. And what they've typically done is they may drive in the morning, go to a school in the afternoon, and help out in one of many ways. They may be supervision in the cafeteria, they may be something else, but they're, and then they might drive again in the afternoon. So that's part of the way that they, you know, they're used all day long, they're working all day. So we're looking at that group and identifying folks who can help us with exterior security by, you know, walking the lines, by, you know, keeping an eye on things, having a radio with them. And there's a good couple there that will be able to help us with that. We have our campus monitors, of course. You know, we don't anticipate traffic coming in and out of the building, so they'll be walking around more often and doing things externally. We are, and I need to speak with the first selectman about this, just so that you all know. One of the things we do have to do at the high school during the school day, we have to close the campus to outside visitors. You know, people will come and walk around the building, you know, what be exterior to the high school? Often people are walking their dogs around the school, whatever. So we can't have that when we're teaching students outside simultaneously. So during the school day, the school campus needs to be closed outside. It doesn't mean students don't still have the same privileges. They can still leave during their free periods, as has been the Board of Ed policy for a long time. You know, if they're upperclassmen, things like that. But we will be closed, all of our even sacks and others where people, I mean, it's nice that they like to walk their dogs there and read. You know, it doesn't, doesn't distract us, but for next year, we're not going to be able to permit that.
Brian, I have one more question. Could you also, I think it would be helpful for parents to hear a little bit too about what the district is doing to support students emotionally? I mean, you know, obviously, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Kids have been out of school for a long time. So I think this plan really considers that. And I think it's, you know, as you mentioned several times, it's one of the primary goals is to consider the fact that kids are going to take some time to adjust as our staff. But beyond that, once they're either in school or remote learning, what other supports will be available to our students?
Sure. So, and again, Bill or Darlene, anybody else is welcome to jump in. The, we, one of the things we learned when we went out in March, we knew the students who we anticipated would need support if we gone out. But there were many students that we didn't know would need the support if we went out. So now we do. And so we know sort of who those kids are a bit, and we, we have more closely sort of refined our criteria to identify students who could use some extra social, emotional support. Susan Bliss has been in, I just saw her today. We were running opposite directions, unfortunately. But, you know, she's been working throughout the summer, thinking about and working through- thinking about and working through participating in webinars, holding some webinars and, and working with the school counselors, psychologists and social workers to, you know, continue the, their professional development around this work. We're looking at in the week of 24th, some very specific work with, with our clinical team and with our teachers as well. And as you mentioned, that Susan will be a large part of helping to design and deliver. So in truth, the work we've done with Ruler up to this point, and certainly it will continue, and it certainly became a strong asset for a lot of people. You know, the, the skills around emotional intelligence really work, they, they work and they're helpful. And I think they did help the number of our staff and others, and our kids and those that, since we've been a few years down the line. There are several other sort of webinar opportunities that I know that I and members of the cabinet are taking advantage of along with Susan and others. It's to, part of it's giving permission, right? Giving permission to our teachers and others to take a little bit more time to establish those relationships in the appropriate way. The, I do think the scheduling change at the high school is going to help with it. I think that in schools that have transitioned to a block schedule, they've found that it's been helpful for the students' approach and mindset, their balance in their stress levels. It's, it's a strategy that meets the goals that we identified a few years ago around student stress and anxiety. It helps to ameliorate that, that a bit for kids. So I think that will be helpful as well. So I don't know if there's any more.
No, I think that the, the training that Susan Bliss and the other mental health professionals are going to do with staff at the beginning of the year, that week of the 24th, is going to be an important way to, you know, help teachers learn some strategies and how to deal with the students when they come into the classroom. Because again, the students won't have been in school for six months. So we're anticipating, you know, a, a, a certain level of anxiety and stress, you know, just being back in the school and dealing with that. And we'll have, you know, the support mental health team that'll be around to be able to support students and staff alike and how to, how to manage and work with, you know, students during that time. We've also, as you recall in the budget, we added a second B C B A, which will also be a tremendous asset for us in managing behavior concerns that we're going to see. And we were anticipating, you know, seeing behavior concerns not just from special education students, but from all students. And not having been in school for so long, you know, what does it mean to transition back into a more structured setting, you know, for an extended period of time? So, you know, we're building in the supports and the training for staff to help, you know, manage students, you know, in the classroom, you know, as much as possible. And if we need to, we have supports outside the classroom as well to help students deal with anxiety, you know, and stress that they may be feeling.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Well, we, we anticipated a lively discussion and we had it, so thank you.
No, actually, I just wanted to say something too, is I, this has been an incredibly, you know, complex undertaking as Brendan alluded to in the last meeting. It's hard to actually come up with an analogy for, you know, for the problem and trying to tackle it. So I also would, would thank you, Brian, and the entire, you know, cabinet for, for all the work, as well as my, you know, the, the people on the, on the reopen committee who've been carrying the water for the, you know, whole Board of Ed. And, and I want to cite Katrina actually, you know, in particular, because she's a pure volunteer and, and, you know, she's, this has been a full-time job and then some. She's done a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous job. So I personally very, you know, proud of the work that she's done. And I hope everyone in town, when they run by, you know, they, when they run across her in town, goes and gives her a pat on the back and a big thank you because she certainly deserves it.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
But I just, I want to add on to that, not only the thank you and, and the, the construction of such a thoughtful plan, anticipating every need, but then also the communication, the extensive communications. I think the parent webinars that you've already done and they're still planning to do at the end of August, it's, it's just really incredible. And just a quick analogy is like, I have nieces and nephews in another school district in Michigan who just found out today that they're going to be fully remote without any further, you know, communication or opportunity to get on a webinar or have that exchange. So thank you to Brian and the whole cabinet and Katrina and the whole reopening committee. It's really been, you know, just such a huge task. And you've, you know, taken this on and, and, you know, put us all on a spot where we feel good that we have a moving forward of the plan that puts safety and health at the forefront while getting the connection and the learning to proceed. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. And I would just, you know, I really do want to acknowledge the cabinet and all the staff. And they're just, there's so much detail and they really, I think, thought of everything. And there's plans in place to, you know, revise and pivot if, if need be and as, as things are learned in those first few days of school. So, you know, grateful and impressed, so impressed every day with the team. So thank you all and I think, you know, really looking forward to getting this year going. It's going to be a different year, but I think in light of everything, we're, we're blessed to be moving forward with this plan.
It is a great team, all around. Okay.
All right, so moving on to our action item. We want to, there are motion to, well, Dr. Lettsi, do you have any other comments on the calendar that we reviewed or do we want to go ahead and move to?
Sure, well, just very simply, just so you know exactly what you're voting on. Voting because we have the changes in the P D days and the Wednesday half-days. So voting on those sort of changes in the macro calendar. We don't vote on the, are we in X Y or in all-in, are we in all-out? Because the, that'll be driven by the metrics and the processes we talked about before. And it needs to be a nimble decision where we may not be able to pull a quorum together to make those decisions around health and safety. So it's really, we're voting on the, the calendar, the P D days moving if they have and the half-day Wednesday.
So is there a motion to approve the changes to the 2020-21 calendar as proposed by the administration for the onboarding and re-engagement with learning plan? Penny, second, Carl, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous vote. Thank you. And so now we will move back to comments from the public. Again, if there's anyone wishing to address the board, please just raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Okay, I don't see any comments.
Okay.
So then we'll move on to announcements and future business. So Lettsi?
Sure, so I do want to strongly encourage folks to go to the website. You know, if you go to the New Canaan Public Schools webpage, there's a pop-up that has a link to go right to it. I did, as I mentioned, what we shared tonight is all on there, plus other information, other, you know, updates and things. So if people haven't seen it, I encourage them to do so. Our next scheduled Board of Ed meeting is Tuesday, September 8th. And that is generally the meeting where we'll go, we go through the end of your financial reports and others. I would like to suggest a Board of Ed meeting for August 20, 24th, which is two weeks from today. That would give us an opportunity to discuss updated plans, but also to revisit the district goals and objectives, look at our spending and to get an update on district enrollment as it stands just prior to the start of the school year. So those two weeks will be important for that. The, you know, we, we can keep it to a crisp agenda, but it's also the first day that our staff are back for their professional learning. So I, I think for lots of reasons, I'd like to make that proposal. If the board is amenable to that, I'll send around. Or Katrina and I will talk and we'll, we'll get something around to, to get it scheduled. As a special meeting, we'll be, you know, the agenda would be set in advance. And, but it's just a good touch point, I think, for us as we start bringing people back in the building to scale, you know, across the district. So lots to talk about.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Obviously, there's so much going on and to be able to have the time for the, to revisit the, the goals. Because there's, there's some important things on, on that and we just didn't have time to get to that this meeting, obviously given all the other, you know, mountain of stuff that everyone's been working on. So I think it's a great idea.
Great, well, and you all said it, I just want to repeat it. Thank you to everyone who's been working so hard. I mean, as you mentioned, the cabinet, the reopen committee, the, our principals are working overtime, our system principals, our teachers, you know, they've never been so engaged throughout the whole summer. It's, you know, going to meetings, engaging conversations, everything else. It's really been a community-wide effort and we all should be very proud of the results so far. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Lettsi.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
So on that note, is there a motion to adjourn? Sherry, second, Julie, all in favor? All right, thank you very much and good night, everyone.